Good morning. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Southampton Town Board to order on this first day of July 2021. Please rise if you're able and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing and join with me in a moment of silence. Just a few days ago, we lost Sean Ethier from the West Hampton Fire Department, Sean Ethier Senior. He died unexpectedly at his home. He had joined the West Hampton Beach Fire Department in June of 1989, served as lieutenant captain. Lieutenant, I'm sorry, cap-- he was served as lieutenant, captain, assistant chief, and finally, chief engineer. Mr. Ethier served his community for 22 years. I actually remember working with Sean when we were putting together a 10-year anniversary of the Pine Barrens wildfires. Now, it's, I think, about 25, 26 years ago. And Sean was very involved in putting out those fires. And we wanted to recognize 10 years later, all the people who came together in a time of crisis and put their own lives at risk to, you know, to put out those tremendous fires. Sean was also president of the Southampton Town Fire Chiefs Council and was involved with the Peconic Town Chiefs Council, also a president of the Red Knights Motorcycle Club. Services for Sean will be held at Werner Rothwell Funeral Home, 60 Mil Road, West Hampton Beach, on Thursday, July 1, from 3:00 to 5:00 and 7:00 to 9:00. And the family service will be at 9:00 a.m. Friday, July 2, followed by a procession to the West Hampton Beach Fire Department. So, on behalf of the town, we thank Sean for his many decades of volunteerism with the fire department for putting the lives of others before his own. And we're sorry for the loss. We certainly send our sincerest condolences to the family. And let's join together in a moment of silence. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Oh, actually, hold on. Would you read the special meeting notice and then call the roll?
Certainly. Members of the Town Board, special Town Board meeting, Thursday, July 1, 2021, 11:00 a.m. Please be advised that pursuant to Section 62 of Town Law, a special Town Board meeting will be held in the Town Board Meeting Room, Southampton Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, on Thursday, July 1, 2021, at 11:00 a.m. for the purpose of considering the following. Authorize the supervisor to execute an amendment to the licensing agreement with the Bridgehampton Child Care and Recreation Center for temporary use of the Bridgehampton Community Center. Appoint Deanna Goldstein Fremont to Public Safety Dispatcher 1, position in the Police Department. Appoint Marceline Fisher to the Public Safety Dispatcher 1, position in the Police Department. And appoint Matthew O'Connor to Public Safety Dispatcher 3, position in Police Communications. Appoint Bernard Mulligan to Public Safety Dispatcher 2, position in Police Communications. Jay Schneiderman, Supervisor, Town of Southampton, dated June 29, 2021. Supervisor Schneiderman.
Present.
Councilwoman Lobstad.
Here.
Councilman Martell.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skivoni.
Present.
All right, thank you, Sunday. There's one additional resolution that Councilman Bouvier would like to have added to the agenda tonight, I'm sorry, this morning, 36916. It's cost reimbursement waiver for the 2021 Hamlet Green Summer Concert Series to be held Tuesday nights from July 6 to August 3, 2021, with rain dates of August 10 and August 17 of 2021. So, I've, is there a second to add that on, John?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martell, so.
Well, I moved it, so.
Oh, you moved it. Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll need four out of five to add it to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous, so we'll take that up as well. All right, we're going to start with public portion. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in the public portion of this special meeting? Is no hybrid in public portion? I don't think so. All right. Seeing none, make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bouvier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll go to the resolutions. Julie, do you have the first one there?
Town Board Resolution 2021-675, authorize the supervisor to execute an amendment to the license agreement with the Bridgehampton Child Care and Recreation Center for temporary use of the Bridgehampton Community Center.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. 676 of 2021 appoints Deanna Goldstein Fremont to Public Safety Dispatcher 1, position in the Police Department.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Skivoni. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. 677 of 2021 appoints Marceline Fisher to Public Safety Dispatcher 1, position in the Police Department.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Lobstad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. 678 of 2021 appoints Matthew O'Connor to Public Safety Dispatcher 3, position in Police Communications.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Three, I'm sorry, 679 of 2021 appoints Bernard Mulligan to Public Safety Dispatcher 2, position in Police Communications.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Lobstad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, approved. John?
On this walk off. Yeah. Resolution 36916, cost reimbursement waiver for the 2021 Hamlet Green Summer Concert Series to be held Tuesday nights from July 6 to August 3, 2021, with rain dates of August 10 and 17, 2021.
Second. Seconded by Councilman Martell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, approved. All right, that is the last resolution. Is there any other business? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
We're adjourned, I guess. I seconded by Councilman Skivoni. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, we are adjourned. Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this first day of July 2021. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lobstad.
Here.
Councilman Martell.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skivoni.
Present.
All right, thank you. We have everybody here. We're going to start the work session with a presentation by the Southampton Airport Noise Advisory Committee. I believe that Councilman Skivoni will be leading this, as well as Ron Klausner, who's on the Noise Advisory Committee. So, Councilman Skivoni, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Supervisor, and thank you all for being here. My apologies for not making the last two work sessions because of personal reasons, but we're back now. The Aircraft Noise Advisory Committee has been in existence for several years, and we've been working throughout the year to study air traffic and issues and air noise over the town of Southampton. And today, I want to go through some things that you may or may not know with the different venues that affect the constituents in the town of Southampton, and some of the numbers that we've been looking at and some of the possible, well, things that could happen in the future as well. We're going to have a presentation tonight from Ron Klausner, who is going to present the economic feasibility study from the town of East Hampton on the East Hampton Airport. Now, that joins our property. So, I believe that this PowerPoint is now live, so I'm going to go through this. This is the east end of Long Island, and these stars represent the venues that affect people in the town of Southampton. And here they are. To the west, we have Gabriski Airport. That's the large star to the western portion of the town. And also, in the center, we have a heliport that is located in the Village of Southampton. And all the way to the east, we have, of course, East Hampton Town Airport. Now, one of the ironies of these three venues is that none of them are within the municipality of the town of Southampton. Well, actually, they're in the municipalities, but Gabriski is controlled by Suffolk County. The helipad is controlled by Southampton Village. And of course, East Hampton Airport is controlled by the town of East Hampton, but it does affect us considerably, and that is the topic of our presentation today. The first is the Southampton Village Heliport. This is located on the Barrier Beach. It's actually across from one of our trustee roads, and they get helicopters. It is virtually uncontrolled. There is a small fee to land there to the village. And, the next slide, please. This is the location of the heliport. And I think that's important for us to note, that it's actually closer to Palm Quag Beach than it is to Cooper's Beach, or it's closer to Hampton Bays than it is to the Village of Southampton. And they get a considerable amount of helicopter traffic. Gabriski Airport, to the west, it's a large airport. Those are the call letters, FOK. And if we go to the next slide, you can see here, this is, I had to turn it, we turned this on its side to make it fit. This is one of the biggest runways in New York State. Now, if you look at the one that goes to the bottom right, that actually goes out to the northeast, if you can follow that. That is a 9,000-square-foot runway, and not square foot, linear foot runway, and the other two runways are 5,000 square feet. Now, the issue in West Hampton, this houses the 106 Rescue Wing, and it also has considerable amount of commercial traffic as well. The next slide. Now, they have noise abatement routes in and out of Gabriski Airport, to the northeast and northwest. And those fly over protected areas. And from our experience, we talked to the CAC West and some folks in West Hampton, you know, there's significant support in the community, I believe, for this airport. But when the jets and helicopters and planes fly out of the southwest and southeast and to the direct, directly to the south, it's over heavily populated areas. So, we really would like Gabriski, or the pilots flying in and out of Gabriski, to use those noise abatement areas to the northwest and northeast. I think that would be a real help in that area. Now, this is a county airport. There's an aerial view of it right there. You can see that long runway. That's actually an emergency runway for the shuttlecraft, right? That was one of those. I learned that from Councilman Bouvier, yeah, when we had the shuttlecraft program running. Legislator Fleming and Suffolk County Legislature has reconstituted the Gabriski Airport Community Advisory Board. This is a 16-member board. I was appointed to that board. And we are having our first meeting on July 28 in the county center in Riverside. So, we will be discussing some of the issues in and around Gabriski Airport. That 16-member board also consists of many, many folks in the West Hampton Beach area and West Hampton area, also Quag and some of the other areas around there. Okay. And the next one, East Hampton Airport, H2O. This is located to our east, and it is, this property of this 600-acre airport backs up to the borderline of Southampton Town. On this slide, you can see to the left where it says Southampton Town, that is us. Right. And, but not only is that town line road, but on the other side, the town of Southampton actually owns property right there. We have protected land there. And, so, if you would, go to the next slide, please. This is a modified version of the operations through May of 2021, '20, as well as '19. And you have the, this comes out of a document that was put out by the town of East Hampton, and the board members have been, you've been giving the larger document. They get a little bit more granular with the different kinds of flights that come in and out. But you can see the difference between 2019 and 2021. It's significant, I believe. And so, there it is. Okay, next slide. All right, so the East Hampton Airport, they have issued a preliminary economic impact analysis, and Ron Klausner from our committee is going to go through some of the findings of that.
I don't know. If you could turn that on. Maybe, tell me, John, you can share your screen so.
Sure.
If. Ron, we're going to try to get the other screen up while.
That'd be great.
There you go.
Oh, perfect.
Does that work, or would you like?
No, that works. I don't have my glasses. I can see well enough. At least, I'll know what slide we're on. Good morning. Thank you, Supervisor, Town Council members and others for inviting the Southampton Aircraft Advisory Committee to make this presentation today. The town of East Hampton hired an independent consultant, HRNA Advisors, to make an independent economic feasibility report on the impact of the East Hampton Airport on the local economy. It presented the study to the East Hampton Town Council on May 11. And I'm going to present portions of that report, which shows an overall economic benefit as currently stands, of only between $7 million and $20 million to the local economy, which translates to somewhere between $4.6 million and $13 million for the town of Southampton. And I'll go through that. Next slide, please. The town looked at three scenarios. The first one being, let's leave it as is, as currently stands, with no modifications. A middle ground where they would not permit any commercial aircraft to operate out of the airport. Commercial aircraft would include Blade, NetJets, and other commercial operations. And the third one would be a total repurposing of the airport to convert it to passive open space. So, we're going to look at those three options. Next slide. The consultants found that 60% of the passengers using East Hampton Airport stay, go to East Hampton, so the balance, the 40% go to Southampton. Only about 1% of the visitors to East Hampton use the airport. Since Southampton is so much bigger, and 40% of the passengers go to Southampton, the percentage of visitors to Southampton using the East Hampton Airport would be only a fraction of 1%. Next slide. This slide basically shows the same thing. It shows about 10,000 visitors to Southampton using the airport. Next slide. So, here is the description of the three different scenarios. Existing conditions, some modified operations, and this is not the only modified operation that they would consider, but it's just put out here for a, to look at, and passive use. So, first, we'll go to, next slide, the existing conditions. This also would assume pre-COVID, pre-COVID operations. Visitors to East Hampton result in a spending of $7 million to $20 million to the local economy. Using 60% of visitors going to East Hampton and 40% to Southampton, that would translate to some, somewhere between $4.6 million and $13 million of an economic benefit to the town of Southampton. For the town of East Hampton, the airport represents somewhere between 1% and 3% of its economy. I spoke with a town council member a week or two ago, and he mentioned to me that the town of Southampton has an economy approximately four times the size of East Hampton. Given that, the airport would represent between 1/6 of 1% and 1/2 of 1% of the economy of Southampton. I repeat those numbers, 1/6 of 1% to 1/2 of 1%. Personally, I find it quite insignificant, given the damage done to our economy and quality of life, but it's another story. Next slide, please. Next, we look at the modified operations, where there would be no commercial flights, no Blade, no NetJets, only privately owned helicopters, jets, and planes. The study here shows that if that scenario were used, 48%, almost half of the current visitors using the airport would continue to come out here if they could not use the airport. The balance would still come out. And they found that spending would be reduced in East Hampton by $3 to $7 million. That would translate about half of the spending in Southampton would result in $2 to $4.6 million for our local economy here, which means a potential economic loss of between 1/12 of 1% and 1/4 of 1% of our economy. The third option would be a passive use. It would assume that the airport would be closed and repurposed into passive open space. This shows the environmental and quality of life benefits that would inure to the residents, such as a reduction of noise, water, and ground pollution. We already have a superfund site at the airport. Hopefully, this will help get that cleaned up and prevent further ones as well. It's, noise complaints would drop, water contamination would be, wouldn't be solved, but would be alleviated to some extent, and ground pollution would face the same. Next slide, please. So, this slide represents the key takeaways that were presented to the town of East Hampton, and I think we can make similar conclusions as well. The current spending in Southampton amounts to only 1/6 to 1/2 of 1% of our economy. Jobs, jobs is unclear, but it's not really that significant. Anecdotally, we have plenty of jobs available here in Southampton. The problem is, we don't have affordable housing. There was also a, an op-ed in today's East Hampton Star, which also stated that the jobs would not be at issue at East Hampton. We have the job, we have the need for the jo, we have the jobs, we just don't have the people. And finally, closure. Southampton would experience the same benefits to improve its residents' quality of life and reduction of noise, ground, and water pollution as East Hampton. In addition, some of those benefits may have positive impact on property values as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. If we can go to the next slide. And that, of course, is the East Hampton Airport. And you can see the runway off to the right where that clearing ends is the town of Southampton. Okay, so, if we can go to the next slide, where it says, some of the things that I think are germane to this board are the air traffic routes, what they used to be and what they are now. The lion's share of the helicopters were taking what was called the northern route on the northern shore of Long Island and transitioning across the North Fork to these three different venues, most of them to East Hampton, to H2O. And on the North Fork.
HTO.
HTO.
What did I say?
H2O.
HTO, yeah. So, they were transitioning across the North Fork to Robins Island and going into East Hampton Airport. And with the significant, well, opposition that the town of East Hampton and the helicopters face from the town of Riverhead and the town of Southold, and earlier, the town of Shelter Island, some of these air traffic routes have changed, and this is significant for us. The next slide, please. Okay, so, the change in the flight routes, which was first brought to this board in March of 2020, right after this happened, the Eastern Regional Helicopter Council is the body that determines what, you know, these flight routes are. They're voluntary routes by the pilots, and they are doing what, I guess, they believe is the best, whatever that is, the best. It doesn't seem great for us, but the red areas are noise abatement areas. I'd like to draw your attention to the Noiac Sag Harbor North Sea area, where the November Route goes through, and that is not a noise abatement area, and we're going to take a look at that. So, if we hit that again? Okay, so, these are the three routes. Echo is up around Orient. Sierra is down, the red one, across Georgia Capon and out to the Atlantic and west, and then the November Route, which is over Sag Harbor, Noiac, North Sea, Tocco, Shinnecock, and Hampton Bays now. And, so, just kind of keep your eyes on that when we do what we're going to do in a little bit. Next slide, please. So, you know, we asked ourselves, where were the actual flights? Where are these, you know, pilots flying? And how does it, you know, how does it affect the town of Southampton? Where does it, how, where does it affect it? How can we measure it? And here's what we came up with, if you go to the next slide. What we did was, we took the eastern end of Long Island and divided it into six zones, all right? The North Fork being the town of Southold and a little bit of Riverhead there. Southampton Town West, I included the Hampton Bay School District, that's where that line is. Southampton Town East, East Hampton West, East Hampton East. Now, you see that circle? That's where the East Hampton Airport is. And we cut that out because we've seen, we saw a lot of flights that were coming in from Southampton and landing in the airport. And we watched. We took a period of time and watched where the flights are, and that's what this next slide is, and I'd like you to pay attention to this. This is time-lapse photography over two hours on June 18. All of these flights are below 4,500 feet.
Is that Gabriski up there on the left with all that?
Correct.
Got it.
Well, there's significant flights way to the west, but you can see the jets coming in and out of Gabriski.
It's like a crop duster.
Yeah, yeah.
Must be it.
And here comes a training flight that goes over Robins Island. There you go.
It's going to go in a few weeks.
Okay. That is two hours. So, what we did was, we said, okay, let's forget about the flyover, the flyovers, because, you know, we're looking at the airports in our area. Keep it below 4,500 feet, and count the number of flights that come in and out of each one of these venues. And this is what we came up with. If you go to the next slide. Okay, those are the areas. And the next slide, please. Okay. So, on Friday, June 18, 2021, 5:30 to 8, Gabriski Airport had 47 flights. And 100% of them are in Southampton Town West, because Gabriski is in Southampton Town East. 13% flew over the eastern part of the town, 19% over the North Fork. 13% flew over the eastern part of the town, 19% over the North Fork, 2% East Hampton, 0 East Hampton East. Now, if you look at East Hampton Airport in that same time period, they had 54 flights. 37% of those flights flew over the western part of Southampton Town. 72% of those flights flew over the eastern part of Southampton Town. Now, I think this is significant. North Fork, they got 18%, and I can tell you from looking at this, that 18% represents single-engine Cessnas and training flights. East Hampton West, 31%, East Hampton East, 4%. Now, by the way, there were nine helicopters into the helipad that went west. So we're trying to empirically analyze where flights are going and where they're flying, who's being affected. So we have a number of these different time lapse recordings, and here's another one. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is Sunday, June 27th. Yeah, 5:30 to 8:30, this is a three-hour time period. Okay, so that's three hours of all of the flights in the town of Southampton, and we did the same thing. If we go to the next slide, we look at the different areas of the, you know, our evaluation areas, and, you know, where are these, these flights going? And so there were 65 flights in and out of Gabriski, 66 in and out of East Hampton, nine again from the helipad. But I think it's important to note, Gabriski is western Southampton Town. Very few flights affect the eastern part of the town. Many of the flights from Gabriski go up to what we saw was points in New England. That's what the 32% represents, because we followed them. East Hampton, on the other hand, of the 66 flights, 89% flew over the eastern part of the town of Southampton. 41% flew over the western part of the town of Southampton. And then 50% East Hampton West, 8% East Hampton East. So, you know, by doing this, we believe that we have found a tool, an empirical tool, to determine where these planes are flying and helicopters are flying and who's being affected. So...
Are you taking questions, or you want to wait till after?
Well, I guess the public is seeing this spreadsheet. So I guess while it's up, if you have a question about this, we'll certainly take a question.
No, no, and I appreciate what you've got. My question is, and I think the larger question for people in the western part of the town is that if you have a changing condition, these numbers will certainly change, correct? If you close the East Port, if, East Hampton Airport, do you have an analysis to show that? Because that is one of the, you know, it's a claim that's made.
Quite often.
I don't know if it can be substantiated or not. It'd be nice to see if we could see a way to either dispel that or be able to, you know, better inform the public on the western side if East Hampton closes.
I agree, and we probably would be well, you know, we probably should do our own diversion study to see what would happen, our own diversion study. Because some of the folks who are proponents, I'll say, of the East Hampton Airport, they're doing a diversion study, and I'd like to know what that is going to be, you know, from our own, you know, sources, you know, some kind of, you know, someone that doesn't necessarily have a dog in the fight here. But if you look at this number, and I think this is significant, and anybody in the western portion of the town of Southampton, if you see 41% of the flights coming out of East Hampton, on a yearly basis, we're talking 41% of 30,000. I haven't done that math. So what is it, you know, 15,000 extra flights? And that's happening right now. So we estimate, looking at these snapshots, that anywhere between 35 and 45% of the flights are coming over the western portion of the town of Southampton. And that exists now. So I think that that's one of the reasons why we're bringing this forward, saying, here it is. And, you know, this is kind of what we're working with now.
Tell me, John, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So several years ago, we didn't have this November route?
Mm-hmm. It was called the November route, but it went down the center of the island, and then they moved it to the north shore, and then they changed to the November route.
It just seems like a lot of aircraft, these are helicopters, I assume, are taking the...
Yes.
November route.
Yeah. And in fact, that's our...
So the, so the traffic over the North Fork has gone down quite a bit, it looks like, and it shifted to Hampton Bays?
That's correct. And this is, we looked at November inbound flights...
Whose idea was this November route?
It was the Eastern Regional Helicopter Council. And if you hit it again, okay, so this...
So they were responding to all the pressure from the North Fork?
Yes, that's correct.
And it looks like it worked. They shifted it all from the North Fork to Hampton Bays?
Correct.
Or a lot of it, significant amount.
And, you know, that's the route, but I can tell you, and anybody, you know, who lives in the area, they don't stick to that route. You know, they're flying on angles and stuff.
Oh, we've seen a lot, the noise complaints from Hampton Bays, I imagine they've gone up quite a bit. Have we, are we experiencing that? Have we seen that?
We have. I know we're getting phone calls. You know, they're not on the IO noise complaint, well, actually, some of them are, but, you know, in the western part of the town, they're complaining to us, and we are complaining to them. And I got to tell you, I'm really not happy to know that the Palm Quahge Pavilion is now a turning, you know, a landmark to turn up onto, you know, the November route to go up to Robins Island.
Or the bridge, yeah.
Yeah.
But then they go, it looks like they go right over Noiac.
Yes. Yes, Noiac, North Sea.
Well, that's as displayed, what actually happens is a little different than what you're seeing.
So they go over the Shinnecock Canal, and then they turn right through the Bay, Pecan Bay, and then they drop back down to the southeast through North Sea and Noiac.
Right. And that's, that's the inbound route. And we looked at inbound helicopters on June 11th, a Friday out of season, right? Of the 36 inbound that day, 8 to 8, they were mostly taking the November route. You can see Echo, you know, one helicopter came down past Orient and the Sierra route. By the way, that Sierra route, that's the exit route for East Hampton, and they're not flying a mile offshore. They are flying the shore. They're flying on the landward side, they're flying a couple, you know, 100 feet out. And so, you know, you can hear them quite clearly.
So they, they exit sort of due south and go right over what, Georgia Cap, and then...
Yes.
They go out to the ocean, and then they ride back along the ocean?
Mm-hmm. I mean, do you want to see the last film again? I mean, it's...
So that's the exit route?
Three back.
Okay, no, it's okay. You don't have to play it again.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, that's the situation here, is that the North Fork has put significant pressure on the helicopter community, or, you know, the aviation community and East Hampton Town, and so the flights have been shifted, and they've shifted to the south, which means on the south shore of Long Island, which is Southampton Town, or this November route.
So, and these are voluntary, so...
That's correct.
But the pilots are listening to the helicopter council, is that what you call?
Yes, yes, mostly.
Clearly, because it's really moved a lot of the flights to different locations.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So they have.
And, you know, you know that they're under different flight rules regulations, helicopters.
Right, they're not required to follow these paths, but they are doing it.
So we've also noticed that there are some that turn off their transponders, and it's very diff, you know, because we have people who look, and they have a helicopter, they're looking at their computers, and it's, it's not showing up. And they're not supposed to do that, but it happens. But it's really hard on the ground to, you know, frankly, I don't know what to do about that, but I know I've seen it personally.
Dangerous.
Yeah.
No, it's hard to do.
Okay, so...
There's no real access for a pilot to do that, so that takes some work if that's happening.
This town board has, has passed nine different resolutions pertaining to the East Hampton Airport, and I've provided you with all of those resolutions. You may want to take a look at it, starting in 2007 with Councilwoman Gabroski, Gabroski, excuse me, Nancy, and, and then right down to 2017. What you all did in 2016 and 2017, you, this board, or many folks on this board, if you see 2017-319, you supported those state resolutions, which would require a public referendum in the town of East Hampton in order to take FAA funding. And that passed, East Hampton Town passed a local law, and now the town of East Hampton has to go out to public referendum if they want to take FAA funding, which they have not. Their FAA funding will be running out this fall, and the town of East Hampton will regain a lot of control over their own airport. And as Ron said earlier, they are, they're considering what to do with their airport. And considering it's an immediate neighbor, and the flights do fly over us, you know, this board, we're going to have to make some decisions or, you know, take a position some way or another. And the three things that they're looking at, just to underscore what Ron said earlier, and what the town of East Hampton is looking at, is to keep it the way it is, existing conditions, or modified operations to discontinue commercial flights, or close the airport down entirely. Now, you know, more information to come on, on all this stuff. So, you know, we're going to have to really digest a lot of this.
Have we done any analysis as to if East Hampton did close their airport?
That's what we were just talking about.
How that would affect Southampton, because we then have the, I guess, the main airport at Gabriski, and there's an airport in Montauk, too, and there is a, an FAA helipad that's not used much in Springs.
We have not. I would certainly support doing that quickly. I know that the aviation community is going to be doing a diversion study, and that study will most likely say some, I don't know, horrible things about what will happen if this closes. In other words, I don't, I don't necessarily, you know, they have a point of view, let's put it that way.
A lot of the people who use the airport, I don't know who they are, but they probably have homes or associated with homes in the area.
Well, there's other scenarios associated with that. That would be increase in traffic. If, if helicopter, if airport use is diverted solely to Gabriski for people to go to the east end of the town, we're going to have a traffic issue and some other things. It would be really nice to quantify that in some, some empirical way, as you indicated before.
Exactly. And, you know, whether or not people are going to hop in a car in West Hampton and drive out east, you know, that, that really would, would need to be studied. And I would caution the board to just look at what we've done in the past, which is, we've had an east-west issue. And, you know, I'll just say, you know, people are concerned that if something happens with East Hampton, all of the flights will go to Gabriski. It's a fair concern, I understand it, and I believe that it has previous boards, it has kind of paralyzed the town of Southampton in a way that we haven't necessarily complained about this, this traffic. And the result of that is, like you said, supervisor, you said, you know, we're getting it, we're now getting the lion's share of the traffic.
It's, yeah, it's just...
And we're not done with this analysis, by the way.
It's just information, right?
Yeah.
So we don't control East Hampton Airport.
Exactly.
If the board makes that decision, if that's what they're talking about, we should be paying attention and understanding what the impacts would be and preparing for the, you know, how to mitigate those impacts.
Did I understand the vote on this is in September? I think I got it...
Well, what happens is, the FAA funding runs out in September. I think the 24th or the 20th, somewhere around that. And at that time, then East Hampton will fully fund their own airport, and they will have more options to control...
To determine their own fate.
Right, control the number of flights, the types of flights, curfews, or keep it open or close it down, or, you know, whatever they want to do with that. They don't necessarily control the flight paths in and out, because that is airspace, but they do control how their airport is used. And it took them a long time, we've supported them, you know, with these resolutions, our elected officials have supported them in doing this, so, you know, they will now gain control over their airport. And they have signaled that they're not necessarily going to be doing anything on September 26th, you know, that it's, you know, they're going to...
They have...
This is an important decision for them, and so they are, they are going to be listening to all their stakeholders. So if we would go to the next slide, so really...
Could I just, I'd like to make a suggestion, because I think that this study that is way overdue, and I agree with you, that it should have been done at that moment and never really materialized. But also, the projections into the future, the, a few of the what-ifs, particularly at Gabriski, with commercial traffic at Gabriski, which is a possible, a possible scenario that we should examine, and include that in, in that study as well, the future projections, the possibility if FAA changes the type of airport that Gabriski is and allows commercial traffic, today in light of Amazon building a big warehouse there, there's a possibility of commercial traffic bringing product in and out of there as well, how that affects these scenarios, both east and west. And I think that's, and then obviously, the subsequent traffic as a result of that, what are the impacts of that, cross traffic, Connecticut traffic, pass-through traffic, you know, I know, I've noticed that there've been, I don't know what the flight, looking at some of the flight plans, you know, why are, why are they the way they are?
I would suggest that we partner with the county on that, it is in fact their airport.
Well, that's why you were appointed, and I'm really, really happy.
Well, I think they would be willing to do that if the town of Southampton would partner with them.
Yes.
I think it's, it's worthy.
I would drive that, definitely towards that goal.
So, yeah, so moving forward, Gabriski. What, I would, there is a meeting with, with the new community advisory board on July 28th.
Headed open to the public?
It is, it's at, I'm assuming that it is. It's a, it's a public board, and it's going to be at the county center, at the horseshoe.
I believe it is.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we're, my God, we're a democracy, of course it is, yes. So open to the public. And...
We still are.
So that is 3 to 5, and I'm asking for a letter from the town board, from Southampton Town, to have Gabriski Airport require their pilots to use the noise abatement zones that we, that we indicated earlier, at least to start there.
Would you, would you require the...
Not require, request.
Oh, yeah.
And...
You know, like the town of Southampton.
Request the commission of a study.
This is what we can do with these airports. We are not the municipality that controls them, but, you know, they fly over us, and...
Are they not using the noise abatement zones in...
Oh, no. Well, some of them are, looking at, looking at our data here, there's, I would say that most are, but many are not.
No, is it the airplanes, or is it the helicopters that are not?
And jets.
The jets?
We're seeing a marked increase in jets in West Hampton and in East Hampton, Gulfstream Fives and Sixes, and these are not small, these are...
They're huge.
And they're, they'll rumble your house, and especially in the warm weather, when they take off, they, the gas doesn't have the same amount of thrust, and they can't get to the altitudes quickly that they, they need to get. It just means that they're, that they have to stay at a lower altitude for a longer period of time in the warm weather.
More thrust, more noise to get through.
More noise, right. But in, in the, in East Hampton, they're taking off to the west, and as soon as they take off that runway and clear the trees, they're in the town of Southampton at, you know, 127 feet. So I'm going to, I'm going to pen this letter and, and put it together and request that the Gabriski Airport require that the noise abatement zones be used.
I would suggest also, we should commission, ask them, commission a study...
Well, that's going to be at the meeting, yeah.
Right, that should be the, that should be the goal, but not just the, the data to inform these kinds of decisions.
I'm sorry, but you, tell me, you're going to pen a letter requesting that they follow the noise abatement?
Right, to the northwest and northeast of Gabriski.
To the greatest degree, practical, yeah, okay.
And I'd like that to come from this board.
Okay.
And as far as... And as far as East Hampton. And the next slide, please, yeah, HTO, thank you. On July 6th, 11, at 11:00 in the morning, they are having a first of a series of public hearings. And they called it the Airport Revisioning Workshop. And this is open to the public. We can go and speak. I plan on going and speaking and supporting their efforts to change things and to better the lives of the constituents in the town of Southampton, as well as their own constituents. And I would like to ask them, or the Eastern Regional Helicopter Council, to discontinue using the November route over the town of Southampton. Now, we cannot require them, but we can request that they discontinue this route. And so I wanted to have discussion about that.
I think there's a member on this newly formed committee from this group.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
On that issue, so we had, when they were coming over the North Fork before they were using this November route, that was also impacting a lot of our residents in the New York area. Are we asking for the complete elimination of the November route? Or more of a sharing of the burden?
I would say it's an East Hampton Town Airport. Please fly over the town of East Hampton.
All right, but getting rid of the November route, they're still flying over us.
Well, I mean, they're going to have to figure that out or whatever.
Is there a route that doesn't involve the town of Southampton that they can use?
Sierra and Echo.
Yeah, so maybe.
Or they could develop another one.
Can we do a letter, you know, asking them to?
Yes.
Favor the Sierra, which is the Sierra route?
Sierra route is the one that goes south over Georgica. And that affects us because the pilots are not flying a mile out into the ocean. They're flying.
And the Echo goes around Orient Point?
Correct.
I think it's safe to say that very few constituents are not touched by this in one form or another, depending, no matter where you live, east or west.
Would it help if they came in higher or no?
I.
It depends on the aircraft. If it's a helicopter, that's a little different.
Can they go?
I would say so.
It'll impact, so. It'll cost them more money, so they won't want to do that.
It'll cost them more money to go around Orient Point.
They have a fly-friendly campaign. You'll see it, they're spending a lot of money in the newspaper, the aircraft industry or, you know, the group that, they're spending quite a bit of money. And they have a fly-friendly campaign. And they say that they fly higher and they use noise abatement routes. And, well, the noise abatement routes is the November route. I mean, it's, it's over Chinacock Island.
Has that gone up as well?
It has, and it has in the west. But it's also something that, you know, people don't know, I, my, in talking to people, they don't know if it's coming from Gabreski or East Hampton. Or, you know, you don't know unless you're, you know, you're looking at it like us or, you know, other folks. And something that really concerns me probably more than I think anything is that many of our constituents are just accepting it. That this is now the background and the backdrop of our lives, that, you know, there's some kind of air noise, you know, during our barbecues, which, you know.
If I could, I want to take any doubt out that we've gotten complaints. We have gotten a ton of complaints. Julie's probably gotten more than I have. You know, the whole route is different. They're cutting across Hampton Bays from East Quogue. They're not flying out over the ocean and cutting up the canal. It's a ridiculous route, that November route has got to go. It's impacting everybody in Hampton Bays. You can't lie on the beach. You can't sit in your backyard. It's just been a horrendous year for this. And if you stretch it west, you still have the same issue.
Yeah.
Which, you know, I know that some pilots have tried to do that in order to try to be, you know, try to do what they can. So they moved west, but that doesn't really, you know, I live close, within a few miles of Gabreski. So, and I have a tree that is actually a visual flight route, turning point. So, Julie, we're both pilots, so she knows what I'm talking about. And, you know, should I cut the tree down? You know, I think about things like that. But it's, you know, it is a pervasive problem that I think can be solved working together. You know, it turns into this adversarial issue sometimes, also between east and west. That's why I would really like to see that study that shows if there's a change in one area, what do we need to do and vice versa, so that we can work reasonably rather than.
I'd like to see that data, if you have it, too, Tommy John, on like 2018, 19, 20, you know, the number of noise complaints and where they are on the map.
We could provide that. We left the complaints out of this. That is a data point that East Hampton uses to evaluate the airport. And they have an implementation period which started about four days ago. And they've been studying this over, longitudinally, over a number of years, where they study the number of flights as well as noise complaints from the end of June to the end of September. So the, what we saw here was really out of season for the, for East Hampton Airport. And I don't mean to discount Gabreski. One of the things that our committee did do was to attach the IO Noise Report app to Gabreski Airport, so folks in the Gabreski area can lodge complaints as well.
And that needs more education, as I said out there.
That's true, and, right.
So I just want to see if any of those, what they claim is voluntary noise abatement things, whether there's any, whether you can see it in the data that some of the noise complaints have gone down. If they haven't, then whatever they're doing isn't working, obviously.
Right, or they're ignoring, or whatever. I can tell you that if you look at the noise complaints and where they come from, it outlines the routes of, you know, the flight routes that are.
Well, there were issues. And I know Christine Scolera, when she was doing this, when she was councilwoman, that had to gear up because there was, there was actually an issue in working with, at least at Gabreski, working with the airport, making sure those complaints, how they were logged, people bringing tail numbers and trying to do that. So that took a little bit of.
The town of East Hampton collects the data, including from us. One of the resolutions here is a resolution that shares complaint data from the town of Southampton.
Yeah, that's because we were having difficulty with management.
I imagine the number of complaints on the North Fork has gone down quite a bit because they've shifted it to the South Fork.
I, yeah.
And speaking of that South Fork, I would think that we could respectfully request that anybody flying along the South Fork should be out, not over our beaches where everybody is laying in the sun, especially in the summer.
Over the ocean, yeah.
I mean, that just seems to make, it seems logical and something easy to do. Wouldn't use up that much more fuel, just get offshore a little bit.
Well, there's advertising also, you know, and that's, that's an issue to livelihood. We had that argument or that discussion a couple of years ago, planes that still tow messages and things like that.
Yeah, but that's not a helicopter flying over your head and laying on the beach.
But it's hard to parse them out, like whether it's a, you know, a training flight on a single-engine Cessna or something like that, as opposed to a very large, loud helicopter. You know, we were just, we're just looking at flights. And, you know, once we, once we perfect this technique, I think, you know, our information will get better as to, you know, what's flying where and who's getting what, you know. So this is actually, you know, we just kind of developed this this springtime.
No, but I like this. This is a good approach and I'd like to have that data to be informed. I think this is something that's difficult to be able to speak intelligently.
It is, and I agree. And it's hard to present to a board like this with, you know, empirical information to have us make decisions based on, you know, information or at least some kind of statistics. And a diversion study on our part is absolutely warranted.
You said one of the things East Hampton is looking at is limiting or eliminating all commercial operations.
Right, modified operations, they call it.
And that will knock out half of the trips, is that a 48%?
I don't know. I don't, did they have an estimate, about half?
And that's Blade is basically half of the helicopters?
And other, and other companies. Blade's not the only one. By the way, Blade is kind of, they operate similar to Uber. They hire helicopter companies. They are just the, they're the company. We met with Rob Wiesenthal from Blade and we had a conversation with him. And he described his business structure to us. And they hire helicopter companies to transport people that go through Blade. It's pretty clever. And the prices for taking a helicopter from Manhattan to East Hampton or West Hampton is going, is going down, you know, because they're perfecting it. Helicopters are getting a little bigger.
Are they, is that like a ride share? Like, does one person rent a helicopter or do a couple of people share a helicopter?
No, a couple of people can share the helicopters. But I've never ridden in one, nor have I, although I have been in my mailbox with an advertisement from one, with one flying over. That did happen.
Like, East Hampton Airport isn't allowed to have regularly scheduled.
That's correct.
Flights.
Right.
Like, you know, you're leaving from whatever MacArthur Airport and arriving in East Hampton.
Well, it's a closed field, right?
It's not that kind of airport that allows that.
You just call your turn and wait.
Right, so with the jets, what happens is, as I understand it, is that an individual or a group can rent out one of these private jets and then others can also buy seats and go to different areas. And that's how they operate it.
That's how they do it now.
And I'm sure that's woefully incomplete because, you know, they certainly have this down. But it is not, you know, regular operations. And I would like the board and our community to consider this concept. These airports are not airports that have changed and we are necessarily experiencing what we are experiencing. I believe that these airports are in the process of changing. And I don't know what they're going to look like in five or 10 years. And that's something that I think that we really should pay serious attention to. And I don't have to tell you all that.
What are the rules on seaplanes? Where are they allowed to land legally?
Well, they can, they can land in the airfields and in Southampton.
If East Hampton Airport were eliminated and somebody took a seaplane, could they, are there bodies of water they're allowed to land in?
Yeah, yeah, 1,500 feet in the town of Southampton and farther out in East Hampton. I'd have to review the code.
There are, yeah.
But, hmm? They ban them.
Yeah, but they can only ban them within.
Shelter Island.
I think probably in the inner harbors, East Hampton ban them. But once you're 1,500 feet off the coast.
I would like to take a look at this and, you know.
There's something we need to think about, too, that, I'm just thinking that these people with their $20 million estates, they're coming. And they're going to come in the most convenient way. And it may not be Gabreski because Gabreski is a long drive to your, you know, your mansion out in Sagaponic, wherever it may be.
But it's not if there's an unused helipad in Springs or.
There is one, yeah. Or there's Montauk.
It's a change of vehicle.
Which is a long drive, too, a lot of traffic from Montauk. Or it could be a seaplane off a Sag Harbor somewhere, you know.
No, your point's taken. You know, I think people will find a way.
I think they're not going to sit in traffic, that's what I think.
I don't know.
And selling their home.
I don't know.
Right, we don't, we don't know that. But it's certainly important to study. And, and we also, you know, the helicopters that are going into East Hampton and Gabreski, the lion's share is coming over us. And really, that November route that goes over North Sea, New York and Southern Sag Harbor, those folks have been experiencing this for more than a decade.
Is there any?
It's just.
Has there been any progress toward quieter aircraft? Technologically, maybe that's a.
Yeah, there has. There's feathered, feathered leading edges on blades and things like that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Whether it's going to get into the mainstream, that's still a ways off. So, you know, this is a problem that's at least 15, 20 years in the moment. Regardless of those technologies, they're still expensive and still experimental. I mean, there's some, there is some.
The owner of Blade told us that they were, they had contracted to purchase electric helicopters. But, and when I brought this up at this board, we know that the sound from the helicopters comes from the rotors, from the blades. You know, so, and he said that they would have 20 of them by 2025. So, you know.
Those are the feathered.
Well, I guess, I don't know.
They're trying to mimic a wing.
It was the CEO of Blade talking to a bunch of us on a Zoom call. I mean, you know, what it is.
Important to understand that the issue here is.
What he says and what it is may.
It's not the airport, the issue is the noise. The noise, if everybody could come out here and we wouldn't even know it, it actually would help, right, rather than have them on the roads.
Well, we should all have electric cars.
I suppose.
We'd have a gas problem. You know, I mean, it's the same kind of argument.
Right.
So this year, East Hampton alone had 1,860 helicopter flights. And I know that these numbers will bear out, that over 90% are over us. So, you know, right now, that technology, I would say it's miles away. You know, years away. And the town of East Hampton will be making, but these are, I believe, discussions that we need to have, you know, as things start rolling out, as information from the town becomes available to us. We wanted to present this to you, you know, to kind of outline the situation. Not happy with it. I mean, it is what it is. I believe that we have a tool now to empirically study what's happening. And I appreciate the board, you know, supporting these letters to the town of East Hampton and the Eastern Regional Helicopter Council, the actual body that determines these routes, and Gabreski Airport.
Good.
Anything else, or, I mean, I'm sure, these, I have no doubt that this presentation is kind of, you know, creating a lot more questions than it's answering right now. And, you know, but.
But it should.
And it's a beginning of a conversation. So, these are important, this is going to be an important couple of months, maybe years, for us with air traffic. It is changing.
Yeah, I suspect this is going to be a busy summer, probably even worse than the last few years because of all this, A, you know, pandemic subsiding a bit and also the amount of money some people have in a particular class has gone up even more. So I think more people will be using Blade and other services like that to come out here for July and August, you know, which is, today is what, the 1st of July.
And they are welcome to come out and enjoy the amenities of the town of Southampton. We're watching.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Vroni, for your presentation. Thank you, Ron, too. All right. All right, let's do some, some updates. So today we started our work session, our special meeting at 11 o'clock. It sort of relates to what we were talking about a moment ago with traffic. So, you know, it's been a tradition to start these work sessions at 10 o'clock. Today we started at 11. I'm going to keep it for a while at 11, not 10 o'clock because of traffic. Because of those of you like Councilman Vivier who live in the western portion of town.
It only took me 45 minutes, did it?
Yeah, so it took 45 minutes versus an hour and a half?
Yes.
So, saved you 45 minutes, that will.
On a normal day, I could do it in half an hour.
Is there a normal day?
Go in 80.
Yeah, yeah, true.
This keeps coming up.
Did I pass you this morning?
The traffic on the roads obviously has got, is already really bad and getting an awful lot of complaints. And so we look, it's very tough to change our road infrastructure. Occasionally, we can add another lane or create a bypass or something like that. But in general, we're pretty limited as to that. So we're looking for other ways besides the train. If we get that going, we're hopeful for the fall for the train. But even that will have some, obviously, limitations. So we look to things like making everything available online, which we've been doing through, you know, the town web portal. A lot of times, you won't need to come to Town Hall to do things. You can do most everything online. But the employee schedules, we've tried to show some flexibility. In some departments, we've made accommodations, let people come in a little bit earlier. It's really, it's really a challenge. One thing that we're looking at now is the senior center in West Hampton. And we're going to have an upstairs there. And that could potentially be flex space. And if somebody can work for a couple hours there until a certain point and then drive to Town Hall, if they can be productive in that space, we may use it in that way. It beats sitting in traffic for an hour and a half trying to get here from West Hampton. So, and rather they get to a desk where they're tied into the town system, they can answer a phone, talk to constituents. Maybe when the traffic subsides, they can finish their journey, you know. So those are the kinds of things unfortunately we have to look at. But it, you know, who knew the traffic would get this bad? But, so starting these work sessions at 11 o'clock does make sense. I'm not going to continue the hybrid meetings. I think we're gonna, I think we have one more, Janice, the hy.
We're done.
They're done for the town board meetings?
Yeah, we're done.
We're done with hybrid meetings. And the Zoom meetings also, for the other boards, have to end too. So, the.
I am finding some resistance.
Well, the New York Open Meetings law requires now that all town boards and committees, which had previously been using video conferencing, conduct their meetings live in person. So, they don't have the authority at the moment to do it.
Is that appointed boards only, or about our citizen advisory boards?
I think all the land use boards have to meet now in person. Yeah, the CACs and probably some of like the advisory boards, like the Agricultural Advisory Board or the CPF Board.
Sustainability, we have quite a lot.
I think those can, yeah, I don't see why they couldn't be still on Zoom. You know, we can have Jim stepped out, look at that issue, but I think it would certainly help since the town, you know, from Eastport to, you know, Sagaponic, it's geographically a long distance. It would really help people, these are volunteer positions.
I've had that question from committees already, so, and I think we need to clarify it sooner than later.
Last night, we had our first Noiac CAC meeting since the beginning of the pandemic. They.
She's got bad.
Or Zoom challenge.
We might have some more information on this from our deputy town attorney, who clearly was listening to our meeting. Kathleen?
Good morning, Mr. Supervisor, good morning, members of the town board. I was watching the presentation, so I, I was running. I did see you begin to discuss the meetings. And as you indicated, Mr. Supervisor, the open meetings law does require that everyone is now in person. And that does go for advisory boards as well, because the definition of public body under open meetings law encompasses those advisory boards as well.
Does that mean civic groups as well that are unaffiliated with the town?
No, only those.
That act in a quasi-governmental.
So the CAC, which is our, they have to then, they can't do Zoom anymore. The CACs, the civics obviously can't.
Correct.
CACs, citizen advisory committees that we assemble.
Yes, I apologize for not bringing the statute with me, because.
No, no worries, it wasn't on the agenda.
But the definition of public body does encompass those.
Governments.
Yes.
But.
That are appointed by the board, and basically that are conducting the business of the local government, right? They're conducting and making decisions of this body, you know.
That includes like sustainability committee as well?
Yes, yes.
Because their charter isn't quite the same.
But any board that was appointed by us needs to be in person?
It does, because they're performing a government function. And so those meetings are open. Whether or not they go into executive session thereafter, there has to be an opportunity for the public to come, to attend that meeting, to speak at that meeting. So really, we really have to revert to pre-pandemic practices.
So we need to let all of our boards know that?
Yeah, because there is some confusion about that.
I appreciate that, yeah, and I'm aware of it, because I've spoken to a couple of members of, for example, the Agriculture Advisory Board. I did have a conversation with Dave Wilcox about whether or not that was necessary.
Right, right, yeah.
And also Ms. Combrink, as it relates to the CPF advisory board.
Can hybrid versions of those meetings happen?
There's really no authority for hybrid.
Because they are meeting in person and.
Yeah, so what.
Theoretically, the public can listen or participate or whatever their function is.
Yeah, I will be, I will say this. There always has been a provision in open meetings law for video conferencing. But what that says is that what, at whatever location that video conferencing takes place, you have to have facilities and availability for the public to attend and participate at that location, be it as, if it were, so to speak, at somebody's home or elsewhere. So it has to be noticed with the address and ability and accessibility for people to actually go and feel comfortable going and participating. So I do want to be clear that the law does allow for video conferencing under those circumstances, which we've never employed for obvious reasons, up until the exemption under.
If you could forward that, where that relevant code is.
Sure, absolutely. It's Public Officers Law Section 103, and I'll send you, I'll make sure to get you that.
Okay, great, thank you, Kathleen.
Okay.
All right, you know, there was a nice article about vaccination rates on the East End and Southampton Press were well above the state average, which is nice. There still is, you know, typically, it's been one per day, but the last data point I saw, we had about, I want to say three in Southampton. A little upward tick. So it could be the Delta variant possible. It's still statistically very small. But it did bounce, at least for one day, a little bit. If you go by percentages, it looks like a giant increase to go from one to three cases. It tripled, but very, very small numbers, considering, you know, the amount that, in the height of the pandemic, we had on a daily basis.
Two to seven over the total East End.
So, yeah, that's true too, yeah. So we are, you know, we are definitely, we're in a much better place than we have been, but it, there still is COVID here, so it's important to remember that. Maybe we'll get Ryan in at some point and give us an update. We have to some point talk about the restaurants. And, you know, we've relaxed a lot of the outdoor seating requirements. People seem to love it. Do we extend it? We sort of have extended it to give the restaurants a chance to maybe make up some of the lost revenues. But when do we start to pare that back? I think that's a good question. Events are starting up. We've got the July 4th parade here in the Village coming up. It's a lot of, I know Polo is having their event, and I think the Hampton Classic is back on. There's a lot of events that are planning on happening. And there's, you know, there's no statewide emergency now, so. So we're going to be, we're going to be really busy in our public safety functions, our police and code enforcement this summer, there's no doubt about that. Do you guys have any updates you want to share?
Just a quick note, we were supposed to have a concert tonight at Edgar Ground Park. It was going to start off the 2021 season, but with the pending bad weather, it was canceled yesterday. So both East Quogue and Hampton Bays will start next week with their concerts.
Yeah, we just authorized, just in time.
I should mention too, Meacox Bay, that's, I think, important. All of us have been watching, you saw the letter I sent to the DEC. You know, I remain concerned about water quality. There were two basic issues in Meacox. One is the water level was getting very high, and it was causing flooding. It was hurting some of the farmers, because their fields were becoming saturated. Sanitary systems were being inundated with the rising water levels, which then mixes in with the waste and then gets pulled right into the bay, brings in nitrogen and coliform. It's a problem. And we were looking for the DEC to allow a cut to alleviate that pressure. But there was another issue that the trustees were facing, which was, without the ocean mixing with the bay, we were not getting the oxygen, not getting the temperature, not getting the salinity. And what we were seeing is the salinity levels reaching a pretty scary point in terms of maintaining the, it's the largest oyster harvest, I think, on Long Island, is in Meacox right now. It's tremendous. There's also the soft clams, crabs, all kinds of marine life. And the oxygen levels were dropping, and the salinity level were dropping, and blue green algae levels were increasing. And Dr. Gobler had his eye on all of these things. And the trustees were asking not only to allow the pressure, the water levels to drop, but to allow the ocean in. And to do that, they needed a wider cut, which the DEC has not given them. All the DEC has given them is a 10-foot cut, 10-foot wide by 390 feet long, which is flowing really well right now.
It's a drainage cut.
It is, the water levels are dropping, but it's not exchanging with the ocean. So, excuse me, in my letter to the DEC, it basically said, we're carefully monitoring these three things, the microcystin, the blue green algae, the dissolved oxygen, and the salinity. And using the DEC's own water quality alert standards, you know, that if they cross these thresholds, you know, it could be catastrophic, catastrophic to Meacox Bay. You could lose the, you know, entire crop of soft shell, of soft clams or oysters. It will take generations to rebuild, if you can even ever get it back. Besides the economic impact to the baymen, the ecological impacts would be severe, and we can't really allow that. So we're sort of backed up against the wall. The trustees have asked for this emergency permit, not just what they've gotten, but to dredge what they call the tidal flats. It's an area sort of just north of the cut, the south end of Meacox. And if they're able to remove some of that material, they're asking for 75-foot wide channel there as the minimum to allow the bay water and the ocean water to exchange. That they haven't gotten yet. And if they don't get that, they're going to have a tough decision, we all will, because, you know, nobody wants to see dead fish floating to the surface of Meacox. Nobody wants to lose those well-established shellfish areas. So, you know, we're just going to keep monitoring. And, you know, Jim, I know you've been very involved, you've spoken quite a bit. So, they did the first cut.
Yeah, yeah.
And they've asked for the other emergency permit, correct?
And the DEC, to their credit, I mean, they acknowledge that that's the next step that needs to be done. They know that that has to be done. So we just have to make sure we're working with them and get them the information, but not, you know, the trustees, get the information to them what they need in order to authorize, you know, the further work that needs to be done there.
Yeah, but we, once that closes, we start all over again. And then we're back into it weeks and weeks again, and we're going to have a.
Yeah, ultimately, we need to get this multi-year permit.
It doesn't seem that hard to me, but, yeah.
Yeah, everybody's pressing for the multi-year thing. So the tidal flats, it takes, the trustees tell me it'll take about, you know, five to seven days before you can bring in the heavy equipment to even clean it out. So even if we got the emergency permit today, it wouldn't, you know, we have a few days, basically. But after those, you know, few days, if they don't have the emergency permit, we're going to be sitting there, Meacox will probably close itself. And we're just going to be just monitoring and then having to make a very difficult decision.
We're due for rain this weekend.
Yeah, a bit of a, a bit of a nor'easter. We'll see. So at least that's what, Ed Warner told me, there's some bad weather coming. You know, I haven't.
This afternoon and tomorrow.
Yeah, I haven't seen reports of what they're projecting in terms of erosion, but.
Does the DEC have everything that they need for?
Yeah, I mean, they did.
Do we need to expedite it, in other words?
Do the emergency cut. And then, you know, initially, the DEC was asked, give us the, you know, give us the information, minimum necessary to open up the cut to address stage one, which is done. Now it's like, next thing you know. Requesting further information in order to get the permit to, for the wider cut, as the supervisor mentioned, to the Shoals. That I'm not sure, I have to follow up with the trustees.
The trustees want 200 feet, they're willing to settle. They say 75 feet is the minimum to allow the ocean to exchange.
They've also told us a week ago that they gave everything that was needed to the DEC.
Oh, you're both talking.
I just want to clear up that the trustees had already told us that they had given the DEC everything that was needed. James Durye had told us this, and other trustees have told me this, so. I'm just saying. A grain of salinity?
And the DEC has even acknowledged that even the 200-foot, they know that that's what's necessary. And the trustees have been, they've been reaching out, and they've been, through Intersciences, been giving them the DEC information. Hopefully, they're getting the information they need to do the second permit.
I mean, a lot of effort went into the Meacox management plan.
Oh, yeah.
And it really was a balancing of all these factors, the, you know, the farmland and property owners on Meacox, the oceanfront folks.
And a lot of CPF funds.
The issue is always, a lot of responsibility falls on the backs of the trustees in this. And it really, as I think everybody knows, anytime I've been in meetings with the congressman's office and assemblymen and with the DEC regional office, and this, now, this is a regional issue. This is not, this should not fall just on the backs of the trustees. This is, you know, Meacox Bay is significant, significant bay and affects billions and billions of dollars' worth of real estate, as well as billions of dollars' worth of, you know.
They've managed it successfully for 400 years.
Well, not the trustees.
Right now, it's on the verge of becoming a freshwater body. And the complete collapse of the marine ecology there.
Can I ask if the DEC?
For 400 years, it's been brackish. It's been like an estuary with, you know, the exchange of salt water from the ocean.
If the DEC says it's necessary, then why can't we just do it? They're acknowledging it's necessary.
Yeah, and right.
But they need some paperwork.
Right, exactly. And there's certain plans, you know, you have, you know, there's always, you know, issues involved in anything we do. There's five different issues, people have different interests, and, you know, it's concerns about the plovers, it's concerns about other.
Leas turns.
Environmental issues in the area, as well as, you know, the issues of the homeowners in the area as well. So there's always kind of a balancing act, as you guys are well aware of. So, but I think I've been optimistic that we've been, you know, real good line of communication with the DEC recently. The trustees have been real good on top of it.
Excuse me.
I've been on trial for the last few days, so I haven't really spent as much time on this issue recently.
Is there any opposition?
Yes.
I know sometimes the homeowners would rather see water than mud flats, or.
There's concerns.
Pointing a finger, but I'm just wondering what the opposition is.
Concerns have been the, some of the residents in the area of the, near the cut. And there's concerns about erosion of the beach in front of people's property. If the cut goes a certain way, that's, that's been the primary opposition.
But we'll stockpile the sand, right? The sand gets stockpiled and.
Everything sort of got resolved in the Meacox management drive.
Right, right now, things have been resolved.
Everybody seems to agree on the Meacox management plan, but the DEC hasn't, that's sort of a long-term permit, should follow that Meacox management plan. We won't know until the DEC issues it, whether that's the case. But in terms of this emergency stuff, I don't know that there's any opposition to it. I think the DEC's primary concern have been about piping plovers and leas turns. Normally, even in the long-term permit, there would not be, you wouldn't be opening and closing at this time of year because of that. Still would probably require some kind of emergency permit. But you, but the likelihood that you'd need to open it would be much lower, because they would have been opening it and closing it outside the plover window. And you wouldn't be in the situation where.
Well, I don't want to prolong it, but the plover issue was already over, over the plovers last Thursdays. You know, they had assured us that there were no more plovers in that, in the area, so.
Right, and it's obviously a moving target, you know, sometimes they're here, sometimes they're there.
So if we believe that Meacox Bay is an imminent collapse, we may want to just, well, we'll work with the DEC, of course, but, you know, we may have to weigh that between total collapse of the shellfish population or a DEC violation. Tough spot, right?
The DEC is aware of that, and they're not looking to be, you know, they understand that issue too, so.
Good.
I will check with the trustees, as I said, I haven't, you know, we got the cut open and I haven't been, been in contact with the trustees the last few days, I've been over in Central Oz. But I will, you know, I can follow with them today, with Sean.
All right, any other, any other updates? I mean, I'll keep the board, I'll keep you posted on Meacox as best I can. And, you know, we're just going to keep watching the levels carefully. It's really productive right now, considering, but it is, the salinity levels and the oxygen levels are really low. And Dr. Gobler is concerned about a spike in microcystin, the blue green algae. And, you know, when that. And, you know, when that, I guess the other term is cyanobacteria.
Yeah.
But when that blooms, you can't, people can't go swimming in it, you know?
Well, certain types, but for the most part, it's not a good idea.
I'd say.
Right now, a lot of people do go swimming in that area.
Yeah. Last week, you know, before the cut was open, even it was last Thursday, Friday, particularly Friday, I was getting the folks, the permit administrator and the regional council of the DEC were calling me and saying, "We are ready to issue the permit, just get us the information," and worked with our Interscienc and with Eric Schultz and the other trustees, and to the DEC's credit, they were sitting there, I was communicating all day, like, "Get us the, get us the documents and we're ready to issue it." And as soon as we got them, the documents, they issued the permit, so, you know, I think we're, hopefully, we're working together.
Yeah, now we need the exchange.
Yeah, right, and the same permit administrator had, did send a letter last, last week, saying, "We acknowledge the next step is," and everybody's in agreement with what, which Maseker wrote, was exactly what everybody knows needs to be done. So I think we're.
Otherwise, you're, you know, you're going to end up swimming there, and it's, you know, seriously a problem, Jim.
Yeah, I'm sure I know.
I guess one other, one other. One other update, the town of Islip signed the FIMP agreement, so I think all the towns now have signed on to that, so I, I mean, we have a lot of work ahead with the easements.
Yes, we do.
But it does look like it's getting fully authorized, which is good, and that will help rebuild some of the beaches and maybe provide some funding for elevation, elevating structures as well.
Was there an issue that kept Islip from agreeing to this until now?
Well, there were issues, every town had issues. East Hampton had issues, we had issues, Brookhaven had issues.
I think it was the same issue, if I recall the articles.
I think, I think one of the big issues for Islip, I could be wrong, is the concern that the, when the federal government helped elevate a structure, that that money was taxable. So, you know, that, that, just like with the sanitary grants, that that homeowner would then, if they received $50,000, if those are the costs of lifting up their homes, they had to take that as 50,000 in income and pay whatever it was, would be their tax, income tax contribution of it. And I don't, I don't know that that issue, I'm not sure that that issue got resolved. I don't think so, there had to be some sort of federal relief.
There was, I think there was an issue like that in Mastick at the, the last, Sandy, when they were, they were raising houses and they tried to pass those costs on, I think it was a similar issue.
I know the tax issue is a big issue for Brookhaven.
It's a big issue for us right now, but there is legislation pending that's supposed to take water quality grants and make it not taxable.
Yeah.
But whether that's included in there or not, I don't.
It's common sense, because, you know, the water quality, the IAS system, that doesn't, I don't think there's any studies to show that it actually increases the value of your home necessarily, so why.
No, that was the argument that we made, was that most insurance companies don't even see that on, on the, as part of their bill. There's been no net increase in value of property.
You should encourage people to do this because it's an environmental positive thing to do, but it's not necessarily economic positive.
Yeah, I'm not, it might even be.
It will be in the long run because you're living in an area clean of water, so it's.
I mean, I think for some people, they look at it and go.
Yeah, no tangible benefits or.
They're switching to the new system because it's better for the environment, but they understand now that they're going to have to pay a yearly maintenance contract, a utility bill, so it's not in their economic interest, they're doing it because it's the right thing to do for the environment, but then to have to pay tax on that grant money on top of the yearly cost.
No, it doesn't make any.
It's a disincentive for people to do the right thing.
Right, it is.
Well, it is, because it's, in some cases, with the IAS, those have changed their tax bracket also.
For that one area?
Yeah, and that's.
Not enhancing the value of the property, so that should, that should be.
It makes no sense on any level to me, but hopefully that will be changed, it's steaming through right now, the legislation, so.
All right, any other updates?
Both.
We have a couple executive session items. We have personnel. I guess we don't have Lisa today doing land acquisition, so let me put that down, too. There's a couple of things pending, and so let's do personnel, let's do contracts, land acquisition. Is there anything else, Jim, confidential legal?
Yep, that's.
Let's put that down, too, so you can update us what's going on in the federal court case. So, all right, so I'll make a motion, go into executive session for those items.
Second.
Second, and by Councilman Olivier, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.